Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting. Of April 21st, 2021. We'll take attendance, Tim McInerney here. Dan McInerney.
Here.
Hudson Van Sickle.
Here.
Andrew Dale.
Here.
Paul Stanbridge.
Here.
And Jim Genatino is here, okay, I guess we can start. I don't know if Rob informed you that. The Muse is not going to be on tonight, there's no need for them to be on. They just have to tie up one thing really with Rob.
Yeah, just so you know, they're putting in. They provide me with easements and performance bonds, et cetera, all of which I've looked at and approved. The village board has to formally accept them, so that'll be on the workshop on this coming Wednesday and then. Accept it at the next meeting and then they can get the site plan map somewhere, so.
Okay, so we'll get into. The TDD. Floating zone.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, if you're ready, I'll explain.
Yeah, Rob, you give them a breakdown of it. I've spoken to them during the week and they've all read it. So just give them an overview.
Okay, so as you know, or may be aware. The owner of 50 Lafayette Avenue made a petition to the village board, the zone change. Not to an existing zone, they basically are asking the board to create their own zone. In looking at it, it, you know. As it was submitted. It didn't make sense to go with what they were putting in, if you're going to do something like that, you know, rather than hazardly create a zone. That just goes on that one and maybe it applies to others, maybe it doesn't. We took a little deeper dive on it when I say we, I mean, myself, their building inspector. And John Lang. What. Mostly frankly, John and I discussed was if there were to be a. A TOD or transit.
Kind of garbled and you're going in and out, Rob.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Yeah, just wave if I get garbled again. So we discussed coming up with the TOD. One second. Michael's iPad, I'm gonna. I'm gonna stop the video for a moment. You can still, things get straightened out, we can, we can put. With respect to. The TOD, they made the petition. And again, it was unique to that property, but could also apply to other properties. We worked out what's something that we thought would be workable for the. The entire CB and GB zones, that being a floating district. Meaning properties that are eligible. To establish this transit oriented development. Floating zone. And eligible properties in the TD and CB zoning districts could apply. This zone change to this TOD. Floating zone. So again, it was a more comprehensive look than just what was presented on the petition. That one specific. We came up with what we sent to you. And part of the process is that where the board votes on it and sends it out. And schedules a hearing. That. For the village board to refer to this board, its comments, if any, suggested changes, if any. And to. You know, and then proceed from there, so that's why it's here now. And we'll say we did receive comments. When I say we, I mean the village. Board members, which if it's okay with him, I may share the screen and show it. And then also. The people. Who own Avon, the nail enamel building is, as you know, they made a presentation before. They have an interest in this law as well, so they provided some comments which I can share with. So that's where we're at. And I don't know if right now anybody has any comments that they wish to make before they go to polls. Do you like to me to put yours on the screen there?
We can do that, but can I ask a question first, Rob? Why can't they just get a variance? Why do we have to change the law and create these spots, these spots of different zoning within the central business district? Surely they need a variance.
Now that, that, variances are. You know, not the way to go, especially for something of this nature. You know, the village board sets the law. A variant, when you're going to variance, you're going to the zoning board to vary from what the village board said. As part of, you know, proper planning, and that's why it's with this board also. You know, again, if somebody's putting a deck on that maybe doesn't meet the bulk requirements, you know, that's more appropriate for variance. But a project of this size, frankly. You know, I don't even know if you could grant the variance for something like this, it's so. It's not, it's not even, it would be a use variance. But it would be, you know, the bulk requirements, like it's just not even. It, 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 it would be such a huge variance that it would be, you know. It's not the way to go, it's, it's not, you know, it's not a. Planning. It'd really be a possibility to grant a variance.
Okay, that being said, Paul, you have some, some. Facts you wanna ask about or some concerns?
Well, I did have comments, I mean, I'm not inherently opposed to the project as, as a whole. The thing that did concern me was that we're creating a new law to. For, for, to really to facilitate just one, well, one or two projects. So I did make some comments, I mean, these are just my thoughts, it doesn't, I'm sure everyone should. Feel free to speak up, but. I can just read it, so just looking at the law that's being proposed. I remember when we approved the Sheldon, there was a lot of conversation about parking, I mean, not just one meeting, multiple meetings. So I guess if, if this is gonna be written into law. I would suggest that they use the same parking requirements that we arrived at for the Sheldon. What they're proposing is one space for every two apartments, which to me doesn't really seem. Like enough, I know there is some thought about using the villages lots, but I have some other comments about that further down, so that's what that comment is about that. So that was my initial concern there. And then this one, I remember when, like Washington Muse. We got comments from the county about spot zoning. And how creating these island, can you go back up, Rob?
Sorry.
Yeah, about how creating these islands of alternate zoning. Basically wasn't very good planning, is, well, that was their descriptive description of it, if I recall correctly. That really you're opening the door for, well, you're creating alternate zoning islands within a zoning district, which essentially undermines. The overall zoning for the district. And it opens the door in my mind for, I mean, there was, we saw a cigar bar being proposed for right in the same area. And if you have apartments with children, it seems like you're kind of opening the door. For uses that are not compatible. And I had heard, and this is just a rumor, that the village was trying to commission a comprehensive review. Of the zoning, so my thought was, rather than create these little pockets or spots of zoning. Why don't we ask the planner for his recommendation on, on maybe additional uses that could be incorporated into the central business. District, if this is a real interest from the part of the village board. Maybe do it as a more comprehensive thing, so we don't create these little islands, what we're actually doing is altering the zoning for the central business district. To allow wider range of development, so that's what this comment is. And if you want to scroll down. And then, so this was the fact. Like on the face of it, I don't mind if this district could apply to existing buildings. But just looking at the buildings that are in Suffolk, I mean, there's a lot of old buildings, especially the residential buildings are quite old. And, you know, egressing from those buildings, you go into an alley that's often clogged with garbage. I would be really worried about a zone change like this, just keeping in mind the buildings that exist in the village now. The older buildings, I would be worried about this zone change applying to existing buildings, feels like it should be new construction, something that is built. Using modern safety standards, and that could be some of the existing condominium buildings that were built with a modern code, but. I would be really worried about some of the older buildings adopting this. Zoning, and then if you scroll down. Again, this is the parking, so here's my thought on the parking, on existing. On existing businesses, we've said, oh yeah, you can buy parking, because honestly, we don't run a discouraged business in Suffolk, we want people to open shop here and be, and have businesses. So we've said you can buy spaces at the local lots, the problem is, and it's always been a problem since I've been on the planning board. Is that there's no one checking that the user continues to buy the spot, so they buy it for the first month, two months. Then they don't buy it anymore and everyone parks on the streets or parks for free in the village lots. And there's no one checking, so I don't think this is really viable, and also. There's no guarantee, there's also no one checking to make sure that the user is really using the parking spots that they're buying. And I know that the parking situation in Suffolk for commuters, although it hasn't been a big problem since COVID started, but in the past. The lot space was really in demand, so there's no guarantee that there will be spaces. That a user of this, of this residence would want to park at, you know, they might be way out in the. The farthest lot, that's kind of in a scary underpass under the freeway. So I, I don't know, I don't think, I think they actually should provide parking on, onsite, at least one unit per apartment, that's, that's my concern. Or we should use the Sheldon, that we arrived at for the Sheldon. And then there was only one other comment, and this is kind of, I'm hesitant to even make this comment. But at the very top, you know, where Domino's Pizza is and the chiropractor and the Indian restaurant. A new building will kind of completely block the off, they won't have any light and air, so I thought the question to me is, has anybody thought about what. A tall build, a 75 foot tall building. Would do to those businesses, I think the answer is it would drive them out of business, those spaces would simply become unoccupied. That's not, that's not really the owner's problem of this site, but it's just in terms of planning and the thought. About how this would affect the neighborhood, I wanted to make that comment, that was up on the map, I made that, Rob. But. But that was it, those were just my thoughts, I'm sure everyone else has, has their own thoughts about it, I just wanted to. Send those to Rob, yeah, that one, that's where Domino's Pizza is and the chiropractor and the Indian restaurant. There's some nice businesses there that, you put a big building there. That's not gonna be such a great place to have a business, I think those people are gonna be forced out. Not that that's the problem of the property owner, you know, that they have right to use their property, so I just thought it was something to, to, to mention. And that was it, those are my comments.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Yeah, Jim, this is Andrew Dale, I'd like to, like to speak. I'm definitely with Paul on, on the parking, I mean, the downtown area, we've always had tremendous, tremendous issues with parking. Yes, we rented out space to different businesses and that's usually because, you know, people would come and go from those businesses or whatever else, but. It wasn't sort of permanent parking overnight or whatever else. And, you know, the more I've been looking at parking, I always question like, did we, do we even have the right to be able to sell parking spots, because we're actually selling. Public property to private owners. So I always question, I mean, whether or not we are, whether or not, I mean, I think that that's a discussion maybe for another day, and if we've made mistakes in the past. And we, we, we don't do them moving forward, that's another whole thing all in itself, but. I'm not 100% sure if, if, if that's. You know, how, how legal that really is, but more importantly. We're looking to, we got paperwork about, I don't know, a little over two weeks ago. That's asking us to make drastic. Lasting changes to the village in the CB and, and the, and the GB districts. A floating area like this, I mean, I think it kind of, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking to be able to look at this. And I guess my question would be, A, what did the county have to say about any of this? And B, you know. When we're talking about planning and we're talking about like, you know, what the effects would be of in the GB and the CB. We put out an RFP for a comprehensive plan. And it would be my recommendation that we wait to see. What the planner within our comprehensive plan, whoever that may be. How this would fit into the comprehensive plan. I think to make a knee jerk reaction like this, like I said, we got this information about 15 days ago. It, it just feels awful rushed and I don't understand why, something. Something to me sounds, feels very off about this, and you know, it just 100% doesn't pass my smell test, but. I don't know what those reasons are, but I just feel like this is kind of being. Run very quickly and being jammed down our throats for a reason that I'm not 100% sure. But I do not think that, you know, if we're, if we're moving forward and we're gonna be, you know, like I said, if we put out an RFP for a comprehensive plan. I think it would be. Our responsibility to wait to see what the comprehensive plan would include. So that's, that's, those are, those are my takes on this.
Thanks, Andrew, anyone else?
This is Dan, I agree with both Andrew and Paul about the parking. I think the. You know, to sell the spots, we shouldn't be doing that, that they should have enough spots per each unit, at least one.
Anyone else?
Jim, Jim, this is Andrew. I'm sorry, I had a quick question, Jim, did, did we ever, did we ever get any, has the county made any, did they give us anything?
It hasn't gone to them, it hasn't gone to them, they want our recommendation.
Yeah, I'll address it at the end, can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll address everybody's comments at the end and, you know, and.
This is Hudson, I was just wondering, is it reasonable to believe that anybody's gonna park underneath the thruway in the winter that the law is breaking up? Apartment building, are they, they actually gonna believe that they're not gonna find space in the village and park their cars in the village? I mean, if you're talking about a dozen people who have to be located to have cars. If they only have one car per apartment, they're relying two cars per apartment. They're gonna walk, they're gonna find places in the village to park illegally or legally. And we're gonna end up with those spaces in the village at all.
And I think that would have an impact on the businesses in the village, if people can't find parking, you're not gonna come to Suffolk for a haircut or a, or a dinner or something like that, that really worries me.
Anyone else?
I think, I don't think it's a plausible deal that he's asking us to do.
Okay. The only one left, I think, is Tim, do you have any comments?
I was more or less thinking about the parking also. Because when the restaurants come back to full tilt. They're gonna be using these. But parking, and I think one space. Per apartment for 10 of them and not for the 18. Leaves you with a bunch of cars. That gotta be parked someplace. So I think you really need to find out how many spaces do we have in the lot. Left from what they were doing. And what's the legal. Way of doing this.
Okay, is that it, Tim?
Yes, because I did agree with the other ones, I had the same questions. Wondering what was going on, so. I, I don't understand why this is coming in so fast either.
The parking is definitely a concern, Jim, but I, I do think it will be very strange to have all these little islands of alternate zoning floating around. In the central business district, I think that. Doesn't seem very manageable to have that, I don't know, that, that's another, I mean, that really is a concern. In addition to the parking, like everyone said.
Okay.
Jim, I also have one other last quick question, I'm trying to look at the map. How do they access? How do they, how are they gonna access this property?
Would have to be through Chestnut Street.
It would have to be through Chestnut, so in other words, it would have to be through the coffee house that's there now.
That's correct, that's, that would be entrance and exit, but that brings up, brings up another problem. Because that would take away their allowed parking for the coffee shop. So that would create more need for parking somewhere else if that's the way the village board decides to go. Okay, I'm gonna give a few comments. I might as well start with everybody's pet peeve, the parking. I also believe that if a person wants to build. They should be able to provide at least one spot per unit, that's number one. As far as the lots, tomorrow morning I will go down and get a survey of what spots are left. In the B lot. The A lot and any other lot. And try to find out what the availability is, and the reason I want that is not only because this, of this project. I'm looking to two and three years out. And with the gray cigar. We'll get back to normal someday. And our restaurants will probably need valet parking again, especially on the weekends. So if we start selling spaces. Where do they put their valet parking, it used to be the B lot. And I don't know that there's much room in there as it stands now for them to do that in the future. But be that as it may, that's a concern I have. My other concern is with the existing housing on Lafayette Avenue. As Paul said, they're all older buildings. I notice says that they are free to apply for the same. The same consideration as this applicant is getting. But my, my problem is, as Paul said, they're older buildings, the chances of any of them getting. That would be slim to none, so this will be. Just. This will be. Almost a one shot deal and possibly two if Avon is included in this. The older buildings have steps, they don't have elevators, they may have one or two apartments. They may or may not fit the square footage of this bill, this law. So I just think. I don't want to prejudge this and I don't think any of us should prejudge it. But I think we're gonna need a lot more information as far as how much. How much of an opportunity we have. To suggest different things that are contained in this as it stands. If this was a new village with a lot of open space, this probably would be a good idea. But we're so built out that the only opportunity for. Extending this to other people, would people would have to consider knocking down buildings, and I can tell you now. The landlords that have their buildings rent, rented are not gonna be looking to knock down a building and start all over again. So those are basically my concerns and we'll let Rob explain what needs explaining from the questions we've given.
This is the guy that he's trying to get you. He's, he's.
Well, then you should have told me. Hello.
He hung up.
I mean, you don't tell me who it is, I'm not gonna take a call.
Well, you give me a chance.
Jim, this is John Lang. Do you want me to answer, do you want me to answer some of those questions?
Certainly, did we lose Rob? I think he was trying to get me on my home phone. Let me see if I can get ahold of Rob and then we'll let you and Rob explain whatever needs explaining.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I have John Lang on right now, so see if you can get back in and then. You or him or both can answer some of these questions. Okay, I'll, I'll let you, if you don't get on, I'll let John start. Okay.
Let me know when, Jim.
Yeah, Rob's trying to get on, John, if he doesn't get on in a couple of minutes, you can start answering some of this.
Sure.
Okay, I, I think he's having trouble, why don't you start, John, and he can always jump in.
Okay, the first thing is. This, it really did not come out of the blue. It started back in about 2016. Where we did parking studies. And the parking studies did show that there were quite a few unused spaces during the day and even at night. And if I can reproduce that study for you, I think I have it in my records. We did some surveys in the morning during the rush. At noon and then in the evening at the rush. So. The legality of leasing parking spaces, I think is, you know, Rob will probably address, but. There's lots of municipal spots that lease particular spaces out, so I don't think that's an issue. So the other thing is, this didn't come out of the blue because going back that far. The village was looking at, how do we enable apartments downtown, right now they're, they're just not allowed. The ones that exist are, are.
They're pre-existing, non-conforming.
Right, so in terms of the spot zoning. The mayor and the board talked to me about what can we do to prevent challenges in terms of spot zoning, and the way you do it is you come up with a comprehensive. Approach towards the entire downtown. The unique part about this is, and I don't know, not sure if it, if it hit you when you were reading it. An applicant can make an application, but there's no guarantee. That they're gonna act on it. First it goes to the village board, then referred to the planning board and said, do you really think we should be doing this? If they're historic buildings, they've got a road to. To, to, to drive down to get to the point where we're gonna let anybody tear down a historic building. But we also have such a huge variety of widths of lot, whether they're built wall to wall, whether they have. Elevators, whether they have open space around them, so we're trying to come up with, with a standard. And I always like to come up with a standard that meets the majority of situations, not one where everyone needs to be, go by variance. I understand the comment about the variance, yes, you could do it. But that would be challenged because you didn't have a set of standards that you're being buried from.
John, excuse me for interrupting for a minute.
Sure.
Most of downtown. In fact, all of downtown does not have elevators, nor do they have property, they don't have backyards. And they're on the sidewalk as far as their main entrances, so I don't think many, if at all, would be able to fit into any of these standards. So my feeling is it'll come down to a couple, if we're lucky, or one or two, if at all.
That, that may be, but the, the key here is they had the opportunity to pursue. It wasn't a guarantee of it being approved. But if they wanted, if somebody wanted to come, come down and say, take three 25. Foot wide lots and consolidate it with a new proposal, they can do that.
But you know, John, I feel like there are a few, I feel like there are several problems with what you've just said, one is. One is, it did come out of the blue because we only got it fifteen days ago. I, that's good to hear that there's been another discussion about it, but from the planning board, planning board perspective, it's completely out of the blue. And in terms of tearing down historic buildings, I don't think there's any listed historic buildings in the Village of Suffering. There's nothing to stop someone from buying a building and tearing it down. If it were listed with the state or the Historic Commission, then there would be a problem. But I don't think there's any building that falls in that character, that category in the Village Central. Even the Lafayette Theater, I don't think has a state listing. So someone could buy that and tear it down. The parking, I think people are lazy, it's human nature, you know, you take the escalator and not the stairs. Yes, there may be surplus parking in the village, but people are going to park on the street right in front of it. And because that's the easiest thing to do unless we radically change the, the parking laws in the village. And, and you say, no, we don't have to accept it, but once you accept one, you've set a precedent. And if you start rejecting others, it could be, you could get lawsuits for discrimination or whatever. If, if, I, I think, once you've set the precedent, I think it's, you've kind of gone down that road. Those were my thoughts on your, on your initial comments.
And that's, what I'm asking is you, for you guys to consider a little bit different way of doing business. Since the village board is the one who is originating this, they get the first say as to whether they think it should be done at all. And they can reject it out of right. And they, they have that right to do it, and that right is, is written in the law. What one person gets first is another person, it's just, it's, it's not a, an inducement for everyone to do it. I'm sorry, somebody was saying something.
So, yeah, John, John.
Can you guys hear me? Hold on. Yeah, this is Rob.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I got, I lost, got lost, and then couldn't dial in, I apologize, but, so I missed a little bit, but um did everybody on the board make their comments?
Yes, Rob.
Well, yes, yes, but John, John Lang had said a couple of things, Rob, that we were now responding back to.
Andy, let, let Rob and John finish, and then you can make the comment.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so I'll jump in in terms of, and I'm not, I apologize because I didn't hear what John had to say. Um, which, by the way, does it, I, I assume since it's still going, we're still recording, I hope. The, um, I'll just go through each one and maybe start over with, with where we are and what this process is. What you're looking at is not one particular project. You are looking at, this is legis, proposed legislation that the village board is going to either pass or not pass. Um, before passing it, the village board wants your comments, so that's where it is. In terms of the timing, you know, one of your responses can be, we would like more time to look at this. But what I just want you to be careful of, and that's fine, this is a multi-step process. This is really the first step, I mean, in essence, you guys have your pencils to the paper here. And they're asking you for proposed changes. Now, I heard a few things, well, we hear back from the county yet or whatever, that's not the process yet. The village board, um, the process in the code says, it get, you get it. The village board gets it, they can decide to maybe continue it, move it on, whatever they want to do, as John said. They've decided, okay, as pursuant to the code, let's send it to the planning board just to get their feedback. So that's why it's here now. Um, this is not, when you send it back to the village board, it would be with comments for changes, which you made, suggestions for, you know, not proceeding, whatever. We'll, we could come up with a, a letter basically to the board, which they will have to consider. And then it's up to the village board to do what they wish with that as the legislative body that will be deciding this. There will be a decision by them to either continue to consider it, which would then be, all right, we're going to set a public hearing. What's happening now is, is a public meeting, it's not necessarily a public hearing in the sense, you know, that it, it, it's a, you know, like a specific application necessarily. So what, if they decide, you know what, we are going to accept the petition, we hear what the planning board has to say, we heard what the village attorney said, and we heard what the building inspector and John Lang, the planner. This is, we, we now will come up with, you know, maybe they make some changes to the law, maybe not. Whatever they come up with, they'll say, okay, based on everyone's input, which they could, you know, putting it bluntly, say, you know what, planning board, forget it, I don't, I don't want to listen to a word you said, we're not going to take any suggestions. Or they could take some, or all, or whatever the case may be. Then have the law ready to go and set a public hearing. At that point, it will get redistributed again back to you and to county planning and to the state and to all these other, um, you know, entities who will have a chance to weigh in, uh, for secret purposes as well. So this is a very, very early stage of the process, and I know you're saying, look, this was, um, was pushed on us quickly. Yeah, you got it two weeks ago. If you want more time to provide your review, that's fine. My concern would be to say, well, I want to hear what county planning says. Well, that will come later. Um, because if, if you, if you try to go down that path, you know, it's kind of like you, you, we're mixing up the, the order, so to speak, as what's in the code in terms of how it's supposed to go. Um, so in terms of, yeah, you know, you haven't had, if you're saying, hey, it's only been two weeks and I haven't had enough time to look at it, absolutely, you can, we could send a quick report to the village board, we just got it, we'd like another, you know, month or whatever to continue looking at it, whatever the case may be, before we provide our, provide our comment. And as came up at the village board meeting, the, this board has sixty days to provide its comment. So if you don't provide comment, um, it can ask about your comment. If you say, well, we want to hear from county planning, and they don't come back at sixty-eight, like, you know, I just don't want it to get into a situation of, and that's why the code is written that way, that it's kind of circular. It's coming to you, you make your comment, it goes back to them. And then they, then the process starts for, for going forward. This is really a part of drafting the law. You are commenting on, you know, this is instead of the law's drafted, there's going to be a public hearing in two weeks. Um, let us know what you think. You are part of drafting the law and commenting on what law will actually go out to everybody else. So that's really the way I think you should look at it, so I'll move on from that. A couple of the issues and then, you know.
Excuse me, give me the phone number because I think my iPad is going to shut off in a minute.
Andy, do you have it, Andy Dale? Oh wait, I have it, wait. I don't have the phone number, I, I clicked on it from the website, yeah, hold on. You ready?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, go ahead.
Six, four, six.
Yes.
Five, one, eight.
Okay.
Nine, eight, zero, five.
Okay, if I go off, I'll call in.
Hold it, but you need the other numbers.
The, uh,
Jim?
I have the ID and the password.
Okay, you're good. So I'll move on to some of the comments, um, yeah, parking, if you look at, um, what's that? If you look at the parking, yeah, that's a comment you can make, I mean, if you want to make it the same parking as the Sheldon, uh, I believe that's one point five spots, one point two five of which are required to be on site. So, you know, you can make that recommendation or another. Um, going through in the order that they came, I know Paul mentioned spot zoning. Um, this type of zoning is, is permitted and it, and it happens. And, and again, you may say, well, I don't like it for suffering, but a floating zone is basically a, you know, it has certain requirements, and John probably touched on this. You know, if somebody has property that could fit within the zone, they can, you know, look and make an application and say, hey, based on this, I'd like to apply that zone to this piece of property, I'd like to apply that zone to that piece of property. So, um, it, it's permitted, um, I, I didn't write everything he said, but it is permitted, you might not like the, um, the look of it from a practical standpoint, but it is legally permitted. On the comp plan, a lot of people mentioned the comp plan, again, that could be a comment that you'd rather wait until that is underway. Um, conversion of existing, you know, again, that's a, a planning issue, I'll, I'll leave to John, but, um, I think he, you know, said about maybe existing ones. Um, it's indicated about the parking and, and nobody's checking, as, as far as I know, um, at least at the Sheldon, they're buying the permits that are necessary. If there's a parking issue, I believe it's been addressed, but again, I don't, I don't know, um, I don't know that, that nobody's been checking. Um, and the building height, yeah, the building height, building height, and again, that could be a comment, uh, that goes to the village board when you send it back. Um, Andrew addressed parking, um, that you just got it, and the county issue, which I think I addressed already, the comp plan, um, and again, I, I just note, you indicated it's rushed, and I think I addressed that already, and I can again, if you'd like. Um, and then again, everybody else kind of was on the parking, Jim, I think I, I went out, uh, while you were talking, so.
Yeah, it, it, the parking. But I, I think, I, I said, I, I spoke about more than the parking, and John did address existing buildings. And how we can have a say in what goes on here. But, uh, at the expense of maybe oozing you, I think we should get these comments down on paper tonight, and I think we should meet again next month and go over the comments and how we want to address it to the board. Because there seems like there's a lot of, a lot of concern, park and, and otherwise. So, uh, I would think it's going to take at least one more meeting, and I had expressed that to the mayor about a week ago, that I didn't think this was going to get wrapped up by their wish date. So anybody on the board disagree with doing another meeting on this? And, uh, these minutes will be available to us so we can jot down our concerns and prioritize them.
What, what's the best comments, should we email comments to Jim or to Rob? What's the best way, if, if, if the, if the board has comments that they've thought about, what's the best way to distribute them, Rob?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
I think the only person that could handle this is Joanne, and I hate to put it on her, but she can, you know, if two people come up with the same complaint about parking, she can get it down to one and so on and so forth. So Joanne, if you're willing to do that, let them send in their, their concerns, and we'll, we'll have a month to get them together and we can discuss them next month.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk to Joanne, I, I think, yeah, I'll coordinate with Joanne on it, because, you know, obviously I have the law and we can, and, and make the comments that need to be made. The one issue, um, I did want to mention, uh, what Avon had brought up, uh, just so that it's out there for, if, you know, you want to comment on that, one issue, um, you know, we didn't really get into uses, um, but what we had put in, um, you know, TDD says high-rise multiple dwellings. Um, what, this is a little different because it's in CB and GB, they're high-rise multiple dwellings with a potential for mixed uses on the first floor, such as existing uses that are permitted in CB and GB, offices, things of that nature, restaurants, what have you. Um, they just asked for clarification that you could also do just residences, it's not required that you have a mixed use. So that's one comment that they had, then they had a couple of other comments, I'm just trying to get them, we don't have to go through all of them. Um, some, you know, on floor height and things, which, you know, you, the board really hasn't gotten into. Um, but John and I will continue to look at this based on their comments, based on your comments. Um, and based on everything really that's come in, and maybe, uh, tweak it a little bit and, and say, look, this is what the planning board recommends, you know, after hearing comments from, um, you know, other folks.
Okay, let me ask you. No, I was going to say, Rob, Avon doesn't have any applications in right now, do they?
They do not, no.
Okay, so they're just putting in comments because they're thinking that they might be doing something in the future?
Right, this could affect property, so they're saying, hey, we'd like this, you know, we, we'd like you to consider these factors in adopting the law. You know, I mean, I'm, you know, resident or, you know, property owner can.
I mean, I just, I mean, I would, I would just, I would look at them as, as being anybody else who would like, I guess, make a, a mention during public comment. Uh, or, uh, during, uh, public, um, public, um, you know what I'm saying? Um, I, I.
But Avon wouldn't have any problem with finding parking, they have plenty of land.
Yeah, no, they, they don't have the same issue, look, this is a little different in terms of being applied, Avon, the property that they would be considering than, you know, fifty Lafayette or, or some of, you know, other properties really on Lafayette, they're in a much different.
Right, including parking spaces, the problem here is where are you going to put the cars? Yeah. Well, just to hold on a minute, we, we're really not into that. But for those of you who have a life and don't listen to the board meetings, Avon made a presentation, I guess it was last month or the month before, and their proposal would have onsite parking.
Right, their proposal, parking wise, was, you know, uh, well above what, you know, is, I should say well above, above what's uh, permitted in TDD and above what was proposed for TOD.
Right.
Um, and then there was one other issue.
They have a setback issue, Rob.
Uh, right, yeah, that's a little diff, you know, uh, they were asking for less of a setback than, you know, some of the bulk requirements that were in there. I'll note that the TDD, which, uh, you obviously know from looking at it, you can just compare them right there, these, these bulk requirements are right below the existing TDD. We don't really have any for the existing TDD, um, to speak of, I shouldn't say any, but it, it's much different than what we propose, so again, that's something worthy consideration and for your comment, and certainly the village board to consider.
Okay, uh, anybody have any last comment before we close?
You know, I think I sort of interrupted John Lang, John, did you have anything else you wanted to say before I, I went on ranting, what, anything?
No, 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 not at all. Um, you know, we're going to work with it, and as Rob said, this is in the formative stages. We're trying to come up with a formula that fits most of the cases, gives the flexibility. But I just wanted to really reinforce the fact that, uh, somebody comes up with an application, uh, the village can put restrictions on it, uh, they can say, I don't like it, and just reject it out of right, it may not be the right space. So we're giving the village board and the planning board a lot of authority to determine whether something should or should be done. And with that, we just got to come up with a basic set of requirements. And, and that's what this is really doing, trying to look at, you know, a twenty-five foot wide lot with a border to border, you know, no, no, nothing that's, uh, uh, going to be tearing down, no open space, but all of those places, again, um, don't really have parking. So how we, we need to solve the parking issue at the same time we're doing this, so I appreciate all your comments, I think they're right on. And we'll, uh, we'll work to, to get you some answers.
Thank you, John, I, I have one question of you, John, you said that parking study you did was 2016?
I believe, I'm going from memory, Jim.
Okay, your memory, I trust your memory. My, my question is, because, um, the building that was built, the high-rise, where the empty lot was next to Janong's, uh, they bought quite a few parking spaces in the B lot, so that might have changed. I'm going to stop at the Parking Authority and try to get a listing of the capacity of the lots and, and how much is being occupied.
But that's, that's a good point, because that was five years ago and things have changed, COVID's changed things, but, uh, uh, it's going to be getting back again, so my point in raising it was 2016, it was before we had COVID. It doesn't be going to really hold today, we have to, have to re, re, uh, take another look at it.
Right, and we have to also plan after COVID.
And one thing I wanted to jump, uh, back in, uh, you know, Andrew Dale had mentioned about the park, uh, you know, buying parking spots. I don't think, uh, like the Sheldon buys specific spots, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, I, what they buy are permits. So they're required to buy.
The permits are for the F lot. Which is down by Paul Fields, I don't think.
It's just like anything else, they don't get their own spot, they are not buying spots from the village.
No, I don't think they numbered spots, they just get the availability of how many spots they're paying for.
Right, and it's a requirement that they buy the permit so that, you know, if they do it, they, you know.
Yes.
They have it there, now, the practical matter, the people might not be parking there, but that's a different story.
Jim, you said the permit was only for the F spot, uh, the F, the F lot, right?
That's correct, for the Sheldon, it's in the F lot, but as Paul had spoken about, that doesn't mean they're parking there, they could be parking. That doesn't mean they're parking there. They could be parking on village streets.
I hate to do this, but I have a hard stop, and I look forward to receiving the comments and getting back to you with uh with Rob to to get your answers.
Thank you, John. Thanks for for calling in.
No problem. Take care, guys.
Hey, John.
Thanks.
Jim, I just wanted to mention, I I still go into the city a couple of times a week for work. The the train commuter trains are empty and the lots are kind of empty right now. So you might find that even if you go down there tomorrow, they might say, yeah, we have loads of space, but once things start back up, it might be a different story.
Yeah, that's why I said we got to think three years from now when Covid's gone and kind of look back at what it was and maybe, you know, allow twenty percent less. Because people may still work from here. But uh I want to get to uh our next meeting. I would like to change the date to the eighteen. Yes.
Jim, I I had a question for Rob before we before we wrapped up. Um, Rob, two, well, really one thing. Who 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 drafted, who drafted this this proposed legislation? And who who are the authors of this?
Well, it was, well, the, I would say the the attorney for fifty Lafayette started it, and then I, you know, based upon our review. But the mayor, you know, and and the village wanting to move it forward. Um, it was drafted mostly by me and and John Lang.
Okay, no, because because the way that I read it, it really feels like it was drafted for that one, that one property.
Uh, well, no, I, you know, I mean, look, their petition seems to be going for one property. Uh, but that that's the whole point is rather than it being drafted for this property, it it would apply to any. And in terms of um, you know, and again, unfortunately, I had to leave, but in terms of the bulk, I don't know if all the bulk, if they even meet all the bulk. Um, you know, the parking we did take from their proposed parking. Um, but again, we can go back and say, look, this is what we want. And if uh it means their project can go forward, fine. If it means they need a variance and they can get it or can't, you know, whatever it may be, but, you know, I, you know, look, as.
And and we don't think that the comprehensive plan is is, I mean, everybody keeps saying comprehensive, but we don't think that the comprehensive plan is what would cover a huge change in the district, you know, uh zoning, uh as far as having a floating zone in the GB and the CB?
A comprehensive plan would comment on that and say, look, this, they, it, a comprehensive plan wouldn't necessarily, um, you know, say.
It would address this.
You know, you you have to address this. It would say, look, uh, we found that there's a need and a want, you know, in the, and I, you know, I'm using examples. A need and a want for, um, you know, more apartments downtown, or we found that there's not a need or a want for more apartments downtown, or, you know, or in these districts, I should say. Um, that's what it's about because the comprehensive plan is not just planners, it's you know, they they do public outreach, you know, the public, they do surveys, they ask people what they want, you know, and again, the 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 members of the planning board.
No, that's exactly what I was, that's exactly the things that we should be doing in regards to making a decision on this. So I think that sounds great.
Right, so just so you know, we put out, we sent out the RFP, and it, I think it's back next week sometime or the week after.
Right, okay. So I was just curious about if there was a reason why we we wouldn't wait for the for the comprehensive plan if we just put out an RFP. But if we're not sure then that.
Listen, Andrew, you can give that recommendation to the board, but that doesn't mean.
You know, I understand that, but Jim, I'm just saying, he's he's the attorney. I was just, that's why I was looking for guidance because he's our attorney. So I was just trying to find out if there was a reason why we would not wait.
Well, and again, that's, the issue is, when you say we, it's up to the five members of the village board, whether to take that advice or not. You know what I mean?
All right, uh, as I started to say, I'd like to change next month's meeting to May eighteenth, which is a Tuesday. Does anyone have a problem with that switch?
No.
I'm all right with that.
No. Okay.
You want to keep five there?
Uh. I guess five thirty, six o'clock, whatever's convenient.
I'm just I'm just confirming, so.
Okay, let's do five thirty since it's been working. Can I have a motion to close this meeting?
Did you, uh, Jim, was there somebody who wanted to comment or I I can't see?
I can't see it either. I'm about one percent of my iPad, so.
All right, can anybody see if somebody had?
I don't see anybody. Michael's iPad had his hand raised, but he just dropped off.
Yeah, I can't see anybody.
All right, so you're adjourning?
Yes, give me a motion in a second, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go moved. Uh, please go over this in your comments, send them in to Joanne. And Rob will be conferring and I will be conferring with Rob and Joanne also. So let's let's get everything on paper. Okay. Okay, have a good night, and if I don't speak to you, we'll talk next month. Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Take care.